Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call the Missoula City Council meeting of March 5th, 2018 to order. If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) United States Constitution, two republics, which stands the nation in their ground, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me, and please let the record note that with the exception of Mr. DeBary, all council members are present this evening. We don't have any minutes to approve this evening, but we do have a committee scheduled. Ms. Raybine.
So Parks and Conservation will start out the day, this coming Wednesday, the 7th of March. They're going to start meeting at 8:55 in the morning and end at 9:55. Land use and planning meets on the 7th from 10 to 11. Public Works will meet from 11:05 to 11:30. Administration and Finance will follow from 11:35 to 11:50. And Public Safety and Health will round out the day from 12 o'clock until 1:00 in the afternoon. All those meetings are being held right here in the City Council chambers.
Thank you. Ms. Raybine, any changes to the committee's schedule? Seeing none, we'll move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda this evening.
Hi to all the members that weren't here last week, and welcome. I've been reading "The Soviet Art of Brainwashing: Psycho-Politics, The Art of Mental Healing" into the comment period. It was written in 1936 and was read into the record by 1939 on the House Un-American I wanted to go back up to the first pages I had read when I began this. And I think at this time, it's pretty important. "You must labor until we have dominion over the minds and bodies of every important person in your nature." And I'll skip down to the part I wanted to zero in on. "You must work until suicide arising from mental imbalance is common and calls forth no general investigation or remarks." Remark. And I think that speaks to Montana, who has the highest rate of suicides in the nation, I hear. And "the art of mental healing is the culprit," and the drugging of people, which I have already spoken about previous. An optimum maneuver in such a program of degradation is to address itself to the military forces of the nation and disaview them rapidly from any belief other than the disobedient one must be subjected to mental treatment. The enslavement of the population can fail only if these rebellious individuals are left to exert their own individual influence upon their fellow citizens, sparking them into rebellion, calling into account their past nobilities and ideals of freedom. Unless these restless individuals are stamped out and given into the hands of the psycho-political operatives early in the game, there will be nothing but trouble as the conquest continues."
Any other general public comment this evening?
My name is Bob Moore. Come back from about a month out of town and see this big A at South Gate Mall sold for $58 million. Rather a shock. As you know, several times I've discussed that road going by the shopping center and what the real purpose of that road was. In case you've forgotten, the real purpose of that road was to help the owners of the shopping center have more people come and buy that road. That's the only reason. Anybody who says anything else is just not being truthful. There's 14 criteria that the MRA is required, and that's a joke, of course. They're not required to do anything, but they do have a list of 14 criteria that they will have to review and accept and agree before they give out money. Now we know why. Y'all remember the word connectivity? I've grown to love connectivity. Now we know in writing what the board, the board of directors of the shopping center wanted. Here's the article from the paper. "We realize that the development that will come from having completed the present development is probably more than our group can handle." One of the criteria, and I know you have no interest in it because you would do whatever you want to do, but one of the criteria, and I think it is part of the law, is that you have to satisfy yourself that whoever is applying for funds is able to complete the project. Here, in writing, I guess from an interview with Mr. Lambers, they're saying they were not able to do it. They were not able to do it. Yet this mayor and the city council and the MRA still have given them millions of dollars to beautify the project or whatever they're going to do with it. One of the meetings I attended, the MRA, September 16th, 2015, had these three statements in it. The director, that's the director of MRA. "It would also make an important connection from Brooks to Reserve." That's the road from Brooks to Reserve, Mary Avenue. Mayor Ingham, "It can offer a new connection between Brooks and Reserve." The WGM engineer, "Benefits the public better grid. It will connect Reserve and Brooks." It wasn't built to provide connection of the citizens from one side of the town to the other. It was made for sole benefit of contributing to the shopping center. Taxes has been another major concern of mine. I come back, I see property owners sue the DOR for what is going on with taxes. And I'm probably fairly sure y'all saw this article, but I'm sure it doesn't matter as long as we have enough taxes to give to the developers that the mayor and this city council wants to give to. My definition of this is corporate welfare, but you can call it investment if you like. Thank you.
Gave you an extra minute tonight, Mr. Moore, since you've been missing.
That was good. Thank you.
Any other general public comment this evening? All right. With that, we will move on to our consent agenda items. Items on that agenda are approved unanimously in council committees. We try to save a little time on Monday evenings by considering these items as a package. Ms. Raybine will read the list of consent agenda items loud so those in the audience and at home will know what we're considering, and we'll take comment on these items before we vote. Ms. Raybine.
Thank you. We have eight items on tonight's consent agenda, and as always, the first is to approve claims, which are the city's accounts payable in the amount of $546,662.59 for checks that are dated tomorrow, March 6, 2018. Number two is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign Amendment Number Two to the Professional Services Agreement with WGM Group Incorporated for Construction Administration and Related Services for Water and Sewer Main Work as part of the Montana Department of Transportation's Russell Street-Broadway Street to Idaho Street and Russell Street-Ito Dakota Street Project at a cost not to exceed $55,959. Number three. Turn the page. Number three is to adopt a resolution of the city council declaring a certain city of Missoula, small irregularly shaped parcel of land totaling approximately 2,400 square feet, generally located at the northern terminus of West Franklin Street, south and west of the intersection of South Sixth Street and Ivy Street, a surplus, and authorizing its disposal and sale to Black Walnut LLC in the amount of $10,380. And a two-thirds vote of all council members is required for adoption of that resolution. Number four is to set a public hearing on March 19th, 2018 on a resolution amending the annual appropriations for the city of Missoula, Montana, as set forth in the fiscal year 2018 Budget and Capital Improvement Program that increases the total city budget expenditures by $34,424 and appropriates general fund expenditures in the same amount, $34,424, in order to provide additional funding to Arts Missoula, which is also known as the Missoula Cultural Council, for services they provide on behalf of the city. Number five is to adopt a resolution terminating the Missoula City County Affordable Homeownership Interlocal Agreement pursuant to Section 4B of the Interlocal Agreement, which states that it may be terminated upon mutual agreement by the city and county 90 days after the Montana Department of Commerce closes out a home grant. More than 90 days have passed since that home grant was closed out. Number six is to adopt a resolution of intention to annex and incorporate within the boundaries of the city of Missoula Phases 1 and 1A of the Invermere subdivision that's located in the Miller Creek area, along with a parcel of land legally described by Meets and Bounds and Petition Number 9884 to be known as Phase 2A of Invermere subdivision and zone the residential lots, R-20 Residential and All Park areas, OP-1, which is an open space zoning district in the city, and set a public hearing on that matter for March 26, 2018. Number seven is to set a public hearing on March 19th, 2018 to consider a resolution of the Missoula City Council for the purposes of complying with Section 7-8-105 of Montana Code annotated. That's the state law. It authorizes local governments to establish procedures to allow local law enforcement to provide for the care, restitution, sale, donation, return, or destruction of unclaimed tangible personal property that may come into the possession of a police officer or a law enforcement entity of the local government for which state law does not otherwise provide a procedure for disposition. And finally, number eight is to adopt a resolution of the city council directing city staff to determine the feasibility and, if practical, facilitate the development of an incentive-based voluntary stretch energy building code for Missoula that can be adopted within 12 months or in alignment with the next local adoption of the state energy building codes.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Questions or comments from council members? Seeing, I'm sorry, Ms. Merritt?
I just want to note for the record that I'll be abstaining from voting on the WGM contract.
Thank you. Any comments from folks in the audience this evening? All right. With that, we will have a roll call vote.
On the consent agenda, Anderson. Anderson votes yes. Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Becerra. Becerra votes yes. Kares. Kares votes yes. Harp. Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt?
Yes, with the exception of two.
And noted, she votes yes with an abstention on item number two. Ramos?
Yes.
Ramos votes yes. Von Laasberg? Von Laasberg votes yes. And West. West votes yes. Would any of you like to change your votes? That is 12, excuse me, 11 eyes and one absent on items one and three through eight, and 10 eyes, one abstention, and one absent on item number two.
And the consent agenda is approved. I'm unaware of any comments from city staff, agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, or the community forum this evening. We'll move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. State law and our own council rules set guidelines for inviting comment on a variety of issues. Following a staff report on each of these, council and I will invite comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as a public hearing unless one council member elects to return that item to committee for further consideration. First this evening is a conditional use request at 2360 Mullen Road, and our staff report this evening comes from Mr. Larson.
Thank you, sir. Drew Larson, Development Services. And tonight I am presenting a request from the Missoula Bone and Joint, represented tonight by MMW Architects for expansion of their enterprise commercial conditional use in the M1R-2 limited industrial residential zoning districts. The applicants propose to construct a new 31,000-square-foot, two-story, 23-hour ambulatory surgery center to the south of the existing Missoula Bone and Joint. The subject property, if you're not familiar, is at the intersection of Mullen Road and Great Northern Loop and just west of the Missoula Correctional Facility. Title 20 states that enterprise commercial uses must be located on an arterial street, and Mullen Road is classified as a minor arterial, meeting that criteria. And just so you know, enterprise commercial uses are developments that contain more than 30,000 square feet of gross floor area in a single building or contained within multiple buildings on the same development site. So in this slide, you can see the concurrent Missoula Bone and Joint to the north end of the property and the parking lots along the north, east, and south edges of the building. And again, the new building is proposed in the vacant lawn area just south of there between Mullen Road and the irrigation ditch there to the south. Right-of-way improvements that currently exist in Mullen Road as well as Great Northern. Mullen Road contains five-foot-wide curbside sidewalk, which is actually limited to the irrigation ditch that runs adjacent to Mullen Road. There are bike lanes in place on Mullen Road which connect this property to the greater Missoula bicycle facilities and trails that we have. In the Great Northern Loop is also five-foot sidewalks. There is approximately a three-foot-wide boulevard area on Great Northern Loop that is currently gravel landscaped, just gravel rock, that expands to about five feet as you make that curve on Great Northern Loop. The subject property is within the Missoula Urban Transportation District, means that it would be served by mountain line. However, the nearest bus stop is located up behind Target on Great Northern Avenue, I believe, is what it's, Great Northern Street. I'm not 100% on that one. But that's also about half a mile away, and so there's no bus routes that run down Mullen Road. And that's not it. All right. Perfect. So as noted earlier, the subject property is Zoned M1R-2, which is a mixed industrial residential zoning district. And the ambulatory surgery center is a permitted medical use in the M1R zoning district. However, due to its size, it is an enterprise commercial use, which requires conditional use approval this evening. Surrounding uses include public and civic uses to the north and east of the property, including the Missoula County Detention Center and the Palmer Government Office Complex to the north. Uses to the west include professional and medical offices, and so the proposed ambulatory surgery center is compatible with the adjacent uses in the area. The applicable regional plan is the R-Missoula City Growth Policy, which recommends a land use designation of community mixed use. This designation calls for a variety of business and commercial uses typically located within close proximity to major transportation routes such as Mullen Road. So here is the existing site plan. It is rotated to the left to kind of try to get it all on there and have it not shrunk. To the left is the north with the little existing site plan box on the left side of the screen. The subject property is currently limited to access to the Great Northern Loop due to the irrigation ditch on the south, and so there's just the one access point off of Great Northern Loop. And they propose to continue to use this for the new proposed ambulatory surgery center. The current site currently contains 172 off-street parking spaces, and with the addition, they will be adding some new that you will see on the next slide, on this one here. So along with the new construction, they're going to construct 34 new parking spaces between the new proposed building and Great Northern Loop, as well as some, this is currently fenced off and is being constructed as doctor parking right now, and so that's actually under construction through a different zoning compliance permit off a paving permit. So the total off-street parking for the Missoula Bone and Joint will have 206 spaces on the site, which the only requirement is 185. So the enterprise commercial has a number of standards that need to be addressed during the conditional use review criteria, and so we'll just go over those quickly. The standards require the applicants to submit a pedestrian circulation plan showing that all proposed buildings are connected to public sidewalks as well as connected to each other. And on this slide, it looks turquoise on this, it's a little, it's turquoise on the other screens as well, showing connections from the public sidewalk to all buildings as well as connections north-south there. Let's see here, circulation plan. The EC standards, enterprise commercial use EC standards, require one design alternative to reduce the visual impact of the parking lot. In this case, the applicants have chosen to locate 50% of the onsite parking to the side and rear, and that's represented in that crossed red hatch, showing that all of that parking is behind the side and rear of the building, which totals about 73%, I think, of all parking behind those buildings. The EC standards also require sidewalks adjacent to all facades containing a public entrance, or any facade abutting a public parking must be at least eight feet wide the entire length of facade. In all other locations, the sidewalk must be six feet. In this case, they are at a minimum of eight feet, pretty much, all the way around the During the conditional use review agency comment period, we did receive comment from the Health Department Water Quality Division, which stated that all storm water should be maintained onsite to prevent surface water discharge into the adjacent irrigation ditch. And so staff has recommended this as a condition of approval. It wasn't noted in the conditional use application. It is a requirement of Title 12 to also maintain all storm water onsite, so this is just a belts and suspenders condition. And lastly, the applicants are proposing paved vehicular areas in the irrigation ditch easement just south of the parcel, and so there'll be about seven parking spaces on the left that'll be encroaching into the irrigation ditch easement, as well as a vehicle turnaround and some parking over here on the east side of the site. We did try to contact the Hellgate Irrigation Company that manages this ditch with no luck, multiple emails, phone calls, and we didn't get any response from them, and so we recommended a condition that they have to get written approval from the irrigation district for those encroachments into their easement. Mr. Wells pointed out on Wednesday during the LUP pre-public hearing that they have been in contact with them and have received verbal approval, but just not a written approval. And so that written would just need to be submitted along with their building permit. So just the next four slides, I'll be presenting the building facade design alternatives. These are another enterprise commercial use standards. So any elevation that contains a public entrance must have four of the six design alternative criteria, and any facade that faces the public right-of-way must have three of the six design alternatives. So this is the north elevation. This is going to be the main customer entrance, so they must have four of the design alternatives. The west side also contains a pickup customer entrance, which also must have four. And so per the applicant's elevation renderings, the north and west facades incorporate color variation, building materials varied in texture and color, building modulations and highly visible pedestrian entrance, and transportation features encompassing at least 20, transparent, not transportation, I apologize, at least 20% of the ground floor. It'd be kind of funny to have transportation making 20% of the ground floor. Anyway, so that's the north. And then this is the west. You can kind of see the pickup drop, pickup. There's actually a pickup at that pickup location, again with the color variation, modulation, and those types of things. So the south elevation is the only one that faces an actual public right-of-way, and that's Mullen Road. And so that requires three of those six design alternatives. And the south facade incorporates color variation, building materials varied in texture and color, building modulations. In addition, the applicant's landscape plan shows that at least 75% of that facade will contain landscaping. And I do have the landscaping plan I will show next. And so this is the southeast kind of elevation. The east side does not face the public right-of-way, but as you can see, they've had some building modulation, various colors and textures, maintaining the EC standards around the entire So this was the landscape plan that I noted earlier, and this was prepared by a landscape architect depicting extensive landscaping throughout the new proposed site, as well as in through the adjacent rights-of-way. As you saw earlier, the site is currently all lawn with few trees on east and west property lines. And the boulevard landscaping, this one, we didn't review it for complete compliance, but based on the notes and all of that, it meets and exceeds Title 20 requirements, which is great. I mean, landscaping along Mullen would be definitely an improvement. And then that will all be reviewed and approved at the time of building permit approval. So staff only recommended three conditions of approval, the first one being our standard that the proposed project must comply with all applicable portions of Title 20, as well as substantially comply with what was approved during the conditional use permit. And so their landscape, if you approve the conditional use this evening, they have to substantially comply to what they submitted for their landscaping. The second is to maintain all storm water onsite, and three is to obtain approval from the Hellgate Irrigation Ditched Company. So the conditional use has review criteria that I'm just going to summarize real quick. It was in more detail in the staff report. But the project will comply with all applicable sections of the Title 20 zoning ordinance and other applicable Missoula municipal codes. And the conditions of approval with numbers one, two, and three ensure compliance with all of these standards. The project contributes to the public convenience and general welfare of the neighborhood by adding a new business for public benefit, plus incorporating landscaping within the rights-of-way and site improvements as part of the project. The operating characteristics of the proposed project in terms of hours of operation, outdoor lighting, noise, and traffic generation will be similar to the adjacent commercial uses, and the traffic generated by the use will not significantly or negatively impact the area because the surrounding infrastructure is adequate to handle the traffic generation So with that, staff recommends adopting or approving the conditional use request, subject to the three conditions of approval. And thank you much.
Pardon me. Thank you, Mr. Larson. On behalf of the applicant, Mr. Wells, anything you'd like to add?
I'm the present president of Missoula Bone and Joint. Thanks for hearing us out. Just some additional things that this new surgery center will bring to the community. We will be able to do outpatient joints and spine surgery on a much more convenient level than at a hospital setting with a 23-hour stay. Our surgery center is Medicare certified, so it's under very high-quality scrutiny and standards, which gets approved approximately every three years. It will be a convenience for our patients and the community, being able to perform these procedures in a non-hospital setting, shorter wait times, more one-on-one care, and higher patient satisfaction in outpatient surgery centers than hospital settings, and a significant cost savings. Surgery centers are somewhere between often 50% to 60% less expensive than hospital-based procedures. So we expect to add that to our...
So, we expect to add that to our repertoire of what we do already, with more parking, more landscaping, and better insulation to the building.
Thank you, Dr. Wellstein. With that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on this proposed conditional use? And I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Mr. Von Lausberg?
Thanks. Thanks for the information, Drew. Excited to see this happen. I had a question. Mr. DeBari, who's not present tonight, asked a question, and I honestly don't remember the exact details. I believe it had to do with markings, perhaps in the parking area. If you recall it, you might be able to read my mind and answer it at the same time.
Uh, I do believe I know what you're talking about. So, during the last enterprise commercial conditional use, as was this document banked down on Brook Street, there was a condition imposed that required the striped crosswalks through the parking lot, as well as connecting out to the public sidewalks to do something more than just striping. I believe that one ended up with having it be concrete. And the applicant, Mr. Wells, did say that we would be willing to look into this. I did receive a phone call last week from their civil engineer talking about what Mr. DeBari was looking for, and I said that it was essentially concrete, you know, an actual, yeah, concrete pathway between the buildings, really separating the driving facilities away from the pedestrian facilities. And so, that was essentially it. I did not prepare a condition regarding that, mostly because the applicant sounded willing to be looking into that. So, that was pretty much what John DeBari was talking about.
Further questions? Seeing none in Mr. DeBari's absence, who'd like to make a motion? Ms. Becerra?
I would like to move that we approve an enterprise commercial conditional use request in the M1R2 Limited Industrial Residential Zoning District in accordance with Title 20 Missoula City Zoning Ordinance Sections 20.10.020D, 20.40.050, and 20.85.070, based on the findings of fact in the staff report, and subject to the conditions of approval.
And that motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Von Lausberg?
Thanks. Happy to support this. Want to thank the applicant for quality design. It's great to see the landscaping. There's a great opportunity with this to really model great landscaping with natives and such in the area. I hope that happens. And also, I think there's an element of energy efficiency here, so lots of good things to support and happy to support the project.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
Okay. On the conditional use, Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Becerra. Becerra votes yes. Kares. Kares votes yes. Harp. Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt. Merritt votes yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Ramos votes yes. Von Lausberg. Von Lausberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. And Anderson. Anderson votes yes. Would anyone like to change your vote? That is 11 eyes on one absent.
And the motion is approved. Thank you, folks. We'll move on to our second public hearing in the evening. This is a petition to vacate an alley right-of-way for the Missoula Public Library, and our staff report once again comes from Mr. Larson.
Okay. Drew Larson, Development Services. And my second item this evening is a petition request from the Missoula Public Library Board of Trustees, represented by A&amp;E Architects, to vacate the 20-foot-wide alley located in Block 6 of McCork Edition, which is the new site of the Missoula Public Right-of-Way. The request for the right-of-way vacation is necessary in order to construct the new bond-funded library across the entire block. So, the subject property and right-of-way are located in downtown Missoula, as most of you know, and is surrounded by a mix of residential, commercial, and civic uses, including the theater to the north, offices to the north and west, religious assembly and residential uses. The Block 6 of McCork Edition, outlined in yellow here, is where the subject right-of-way is and what it was required, it was acquired by the Missoula County as part of the land exchange with the former property owner in order to construct the new library. The developer has since demolished all existing structures in preparation for new construction. During the agency comment period, Northwest Energy provided agency comments stating that the existing overhead power lines in the 20-foot alley would need to be relocated, as well as new public utility easements recorded in a timely manner. And in addition, the city engineer provided comments stating that public access easements, public access and utility easements may be necessary for relocated public utilities. So, a recommended condition of approval requires the applicant to record all necessary public utility easements within 180 days of the resolution to vacate the subject right-of-way, or the right-of-way vacation will become null and void. So, just the next few slides contain images from each intersection showing the existing boulevard area and sidewalks surrounding the new library site. Currently, there are boulevard sidewalks around the entire block consisting of five-foot-wide sidewalks, and the boulevards vary in widths from street to street. And so, the applicants, as you'll see on their proposed site plan here in a few slides, are proposing a minimum seven-foot-wide curbside sidewalk around the entire block. So, this image is from Main and Adams, looking kind of southeast, showing mostly Adams Street. And here is, again, the five-foot sidewalk and a 10-foot boulevard existing today. So, we'll just go through the other boulevards. So, this is the Front Street Boulevard, five-foot sidewalks, and it's approximately a 17-foot-wide boulevard area right now with mature trees. I know that the urban forester has conducted studies here, and most of these trees were deemed towards the end of their life, and so all trees will be being removed and new trees planted with the proposed project. So, this is Jefferson Street, very similar to Adams, five-foot sidewalk, 10-foot boulevard or, yeah, 10-foot boulevard area. And then, here is just looking across the site, you can see the power poles in the old alley there that will need to be relocated so that surrounding uses can continue to receive power. And then, this is looking down towards downtown on Main Street. This is a 15-foot-wide boulevard in this location. Okay. There we go. Sorry, I lost my place there for a second. So, this is the proposed library site that the applicants and the Missoula Public Library are comfortable with and wanting to move forward with this evening, or next week. I apologize, I didn't note this earlier. There was a notification, SNAPU, and tonight is the beginning of the public hearing. We will hold it open until next Monday, so there will be no decision this evening. I should have started with that. So, again, the applicants are proposing a minimum seven-foot-wide curbside sidewalk on all frontages, excluding, including these areas, but those will be from building frontage to curbside sidewalk, so those will all be hardscaped areas there. So, this is just a little bit more zoomed in in hopes that you can see it a little better. This is the north portion of the property, and the applicants are proposing full hardscape area from the edge of building to the angled-in parking on Main Street, as well as a bus drop-off location on the west side of the building, which will also be kind of a little pedestrian plaza gathering space. That was, this is the proposed site for school, school bus drop-off, where kids would be coming for the day, and so it would be a large gathering space. So, we did receive a couple of comments regarding these areas from city engineering and parking, or from city parks. The first was from city engineering stating that a portion of the proposed public sidewalk on Front Street actually was extending into the subject property, and that a public access easement would be required. So, that is a condition of approval that they filed that public access easement to ensure that the public has rights across that sidewalk. Second comment was from Missoula Parks and Recreation, which stated that any tree located within a hardscaped area should provide large enough tree wells or install a suspended pavement system to supply adequate soil volume to support the appropriate classification of street tree. So, that is also a condition of approval to either provide large enough tree wells. These all need to be approved by Missoula Parks and Recreation, or install some sort of pavement suspension system. Neil Miners here, if you have additional questions on that. So, in addition, the applicants are proposing this outdoor patio area, so this is going to be the bus drop-off here, and then there's a landscaping portion that kind of separates. This is going to be an outdoor patio café that is going, is proposed to be encroaching into the Adams Street right-of-way. And the engineer stated that anything that's encroaching into the right-of-way will need an encroachment permit prior to building permit approval. So, that's also a condition of approval, that they get all of their encroachment permits prior to issuance of a building permit. So, here's the southern portion of the proposed development, again, showing seven-foot-wide curbside sidewalks in portions of Adams Front and Jefferson Streets. The Parks Department has concerns regarding the planned curbside sidewalk and landscape area along Front Street. They are preferring an alternate, alternate design, which would just be boulevard lands, boulevards, boulevard sidewalks, and adequate street trees, and we'll get into that a little bit more on what their design would look like. So, there have been multiple meetings leading up to the submission of the right-of-way vacation application, as well as after the right-of-way application was submitted. So, on January 19th, 2018, kind of an obscure date, but a meeting was held to discuss the Parks Department alternate concept for the Front Street right-of-way. Issues discussed included how the proposed sidewalks would function relative to those on the adjacent blocks, how the street trees would fare under the two options, the two different options, either streets, curbside sidewalk, or boulevard sidewalks, and the pros and cons for the neighbors, pedestrians, and drivers using the planned metered parallel parking on Front Street. Other related issues discussed were grading challenges, snow storage, and ADA accessibilities. Unfortunately, during that meeting, no agreement could be met between boulevard landscape, boulevard sidewalks, or curbside sidewalks. So, again, on January 24th, the applicants provided a memo along with a rendering of two options to Development Services, stating the architect's reasoning to maintain the curbside sidewalk on East Front Street, and that was in a memo that's uploaded to Zire. Then shortly after that, about two days after, the Missoula Parks and Rec resubmitted a comment in response to the memo from the architect reiterating their preference for the alternate design, which would just be boulevard sidewalks on Front and Adams and Jefferson where possible. So, we prepared a couple of conditions related to that, that were issued, one, in a memo a couple of weeks ago, and then, two, issued again on Friday with some tweaks. Mr. DeBari had some, some further tweaks. Last week, he wanted to add a seven-foot clearance on all sidewalks in a boulevard. So, the new conditions read, let's see, here do I have them? So, these are all the recommended conditions in the staff report. Necessary utility easements, tree wells in a suspended pavement system, either large tree wells or the pavement system, and record all public access easements, and obtain the necessary right-of encroachments. So, the additional conditions included a minimum 10-foot-wide boulevard landscape area and boulevard sidewalk with a minimum of seven feet clearance along East Front Street. And so, that would be a minimum seven-foot-wide boulevard sidewalk in East Front Street. And then, the second one is that they shall prioritize boulevard landscape areas to the maximum extent possible within Adams and Jefferson Street rights-of-way, with also a minimum of seven feet clearance. And so, if council chooses to move forward with those conditions, there are two motions. There's the recommended motion from the staff report, which is adopt a resolution with the four conditions of approval. I apologize, this has, and said, oh, no. Never mind. Scratch that. And then, the other one would be adopt a resolution with the four conditions in the staff report, as well as the two additional conditions in the memo dated last Friday, March 2nd. So, that concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. With that, I will open the public hearing with the reminder that the public hearing will remain open and continue on March 12th. Anyone care to comment on this proposed vacation? All right. Seeing none, the public hearing will, yeah, I'll take questions as soon as I'm, yeah, you're just fine. I wasn't sure what the panic was. So, the public hearing will continue. Are there questions from council members? Ms. Jones?
Drew, I'm not hearing very well, sorry. I have, my ears are plugged up. But if you could go back to the conditions that Mr. DeBari had tweaked a little bit, I just, I wasn't clear on number six, where it says applicant's site plan shall prioritize boulevard landscaped areas to the maximum extent possible. Is that referring, that means a boulevard sidewalk on Front Street, but for Jefferson and Adams, is that a boulevard sidewalk also, or no? Are those?
It says to prioritize them. I know that there is some grading issues. I mean, it does raise significantly there, as well as, especially here on Jefferson Street, there is a drop-off just to the north. You can see it. This is like a book drop-off, pull-in, pull-out, and so, it says to prioritize boulevards south of that drop-off, and so, it's a short distance, there is some grading issues, and so, if, if for some reason, the engineers come back and say, no, boulevard sidewalks aren't going to work in this location because of X, Y, and Z, it gives us, city engineering a little more lat, leeway on saying, okay, that can exist in both of these, because there are additional steeper grades over here. This is going to be like a 14 to 20% grade here, and so, if boulevard sidewalks don't work, but they need to prioritize them first and come back with a list of reasons as why they don't work in those locations.
Additional questions? Ms. Merritt?
Drew, if you wouldn't mind, could you go back to the slide that shows the, I think it was just the next, maybe the next one? Yeah. So, right in the middle of the Front Street sidewalk is a sidewalk leading into the parking What I don't understand is what the grade would be of that sidewalk from the boulevard to the parking lot, and if that's feasible to have that sidewalk there.
It certainly is. I can't remember the exact slope. To meet ADA requirements, it has to be 5% or less, and if memory serves, it was like a 4.25, I think. And so, it's 5% leading to a flat grade, and so, it would meet ADA standards.
All right. Seeing none, we'll carry this hearing over. We don't have any additional public hearings this evening. I will pass on comments from the mayor. Again, general comments from council members with Mr. Von Lausberg this evening. And Ms. West, Mr. Hess, Ms. Becerra, Ms. Jones?
I did want to make a brief comment. I was gone last Monday. I don't know if anyone spoke to the student leaders in Parkland, Florida, but I wanted to acknowledge that I think they've added a wonderful voice to the conversation regarding gun control and gun safety. And I've been thinking about this for the past few days. I am planning on drafting a letter to the Parkland, Florida students who are leading this initiative, and any city councilors that want to sign it along with me, please let me know, but I want to acknowledge their leadership, how articulate they've been on this issue, and their courage, and welcome them to this debate. I think they're going to add a good voice that maybe pushes this issue forward.
Sarah?
I just want to let everybody know, I finished the Citizens Law Enforcement Academy this last Saturday. Our police department is exemplary in many, many ways, but on the final day, we get to kind of do a little CSI, and we're introduced to the idea of what it takes on a crime scene to make sure you get all the facts. Then, I went into a simulator, and let me tell you, I am not the person you want have armed. It really made me aware that the idea of arming teachers just to arm- It really made me aware that the idea of arming teachers, just to arm teachers, is a very slippery slope. But it was, I guess the highlight was the canine unit at the very end. And my goodness, these animals are fantastic. Thank you.
Ms. Ramos?
I just want to say it's good to be back, and wanted to thank my fellow council members for kind of picking up some of my slack that I left behind, and for the good job that they did while I was gone. So thank you, and good to be back.
Ms. Armstrong? Ms. Anderson?
Yes. I want to bring for the record that March is Women's History Month, and March 8th is recognized as International Women's Day, which began being recognized by the UN in the early 1900s, well, it was before the UN. Despite some of the important progress and changes in recent years, there is no country in the world where women have achieved economic equality with men. Women are still more likely than men to live in poverty. Gender inequality in this economy costs women in developing countries $9 trillion a year, a sum which not only would give new spending power to women and benefit their families and communities, but would also provide a massive boost to the world economy as a whole. So I just want to acknowledge that this coming Thursday is International Women's Day.
Ms. Merritt? And Ms. Kares?
I just wanted to mention in response to some public comment that I, every day, drive through the mall parking lot without stopping at the mall, and my entire life is better because of it, because I don't have to drive around that huge concrete jungle. Yeah, twice a day, five days a week. I'm driving through and not stopping at the mall very successfully, and I really appreciate it. And secondly, I wanted to mention to that same commenter that the folks who are suing the Department of Revenue are interested in the same thing that our local city government is interested in, which is how the state is assessing property values. And so both of those investigations, both a lawsuit and the mayor's initiative to investigate taxes, well, I'm assuming the mayor is, is looking into more than that, but is looking into things that are not entirely within the control of the city. So I wanted to be clear on that point. Thanks.
We have no committee reports this evening. We have no items of new business. Are there any additional items to be referred? Seeing none of those, any miscellaneous communications, reports, petitions, or announcements? Seeing none, as always, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your service. We will be adjourned.